Let's start with vocal, noting that we have a full board minus one. Brandon Miller has been excused. We were properly noticed for our meeting this evening. And we'll launch into our meeting with our facility and potential referendum report, long range facilities planning update.
Hello, everyone. Facilities team here is here to report on our latest update from what we've been working on. We are here to review the scenarios that we've been studying, the costs associated, and some preliminary tax impact for discussion. A reminder, I am Katie O'Carroll, P. Ray. I have worked with me-
Ryan Renshaw of VJS Construction.
And we'll start with Jeff talking about tax impact.
Thank you. And for those of you who are home, Jeff is the Director of Business Services here. I can't read that far up there, so I'm going to play right in front of the screen here. But we ran some hypothetical numbers on tax impacts on various scenarios, picking numbers all the way from as little as $25 million all the way to $250 million. What would the tax impact of those be? So we ran those impacts on $100,000 home, $200,000, $300,000, $400,000, $500,000, just as multipliers more than anything. So people could get a feel for whatever number ends up being the number, you know, some options of what that looks like on a tax impact. So $25 million in terms of a referendum or a debt issue to take care of facilities would be a 25 cent increase for the mill rate. And so on a $100,000 home, that's a $25 per year increase taxes. On the further range to the far right, we've got a $250 million referendum amount. If that were the amount, the mill rate impact on that is $2 per $1,000 value or $200 on a $100 home per year. So all of those numbers are there. We're going to have this out in the presentation, we'll put it on our website, but we wanted to have an idea of what tax impact would be of various ranges. And so as Ryan gets into the costs of our different scenario planning, we can apply some of these tax rates to those costs and get a feel for what it might cost the tax bill. So these are very preliminary numbers. They're hypotheticals at this point. And as we get further into the planning process, we'll be able to nail down if this is an option, you know, the cost of that option, we'll be able to nail down what the tax impact of that actual option will be. And some of that information will come out in a survey that's going to be getting mailboxes in the April/May timeframe. So we'll be watching for that. And you'll see in the presentation here, February 20th for the plug-in. Please come back on February 20th and learn more about our facility planning. And we'll have the same exact presentation on February 29th. And it's more than a presentation, it's community involvement. So you'll be involved in the conversation on those two dates, the 20th and the 29th. It will be the same night, you're welcome to come to vote, but if you come to one, it's the same thing, you'll see it together. I'll leave it at that and turn it over.
Thank you, Jeff. Before we dive into the costs, I wanted to review the scenarios that we are exploring. So for those of you who were at the January 29th community meeting, we presented these scenarios preliminarily, get everyone's feedback, to understand the options that we're exploring. And we've continued to take them a little bit further and started to put costs to them. And that's what VJS will go over in a second here. But I just wanted to remind everyone the options it works for. So from the left to the right on the scale of what we're calling maintain to expire, the first option is scenario one, which is do nothing. Scenario two jumps into the beginning of the maintain section, and this is addressing purely the capital maintenance needs that we have at both north and south campuses, as well as the site and all of the athletics facilities. That, we already heard those costs from VJS, that total cost was about $53 million. Moving from left to right, we have scenario three. Scenario three is starting to pick up a little bit more of the renovation beyond capital maintenance. So this would include addressing some of the educational adequacy, inconsistency in utilization, key takeaways and findings that we discovered in our facilities report, but maintaining the duplication of program at both campuses, which was a key takeaway that we identified in the facilities assessment. With direction from the board, we decided to not pursue that one and go with the next option, scenario four, to take forward in terms of costing, which is to do some significant renovations at both north and south in order to address the duplication of program. The advantage of this option is that by eliminating the duplication of program, for example, there are duplicative music, art, fine arts, tech ed, and face programs at both campuses. So by eliminating the duplication of that program at both campuses, we are able to take over that square footage with very needed other programs, like enlarging undersized classrooms, incorporating breakout space. So we're able to grow into that square footage by taking it over and just consolidating those at each campus. That's scenario four. Scenario five was the idea of we're moving into the categories that combine campuses and create a single building. Scenario five was creating a new addition to north and essentially taking south offline. And then scenario six was creating an addition to south and taking north offline. We decided to pursue as a team with direction from the board and the admin team, scenario six, because it was more cost efficient to do so. North has more of the expensive programs like the auditorium, the pool, and gymnasium. And those are all unfortunately undersized and insufficient as they currently stand, so they would need to be renovated anyway. Additionally, doing the capital maintenance study, it was determined that north was more expensive for all the capital maintenance needs. North also has the smaller classrooms as compared to south, even though south is an older building. And so it was just more advantageous to take advantage of the existing space within south and then add on to that. So that's scenario six, renovating south with an addition. And then scenario seven is a completely new building. It was determined in our study that we have enough real estate here at Arrowhead to take advantage of some of the athletic fields, current athletic field sites, and build a new building, take both campuses offline, and then displace the athletic fields in their current rotation following that as a phased approach. So those are the four options we've decided to take forward. As we mentioned, scenario two has already been priced. Scenarios four, six, and seven, you will see the cost for shortly. And here's a little bit of a graphic representation of what I just described for scenarios four, six, and seven on the left. And these are just scenarios, they're not designed at this juncture. So what is illustrated here is purely a diagram and not a design, so I'm just saying it with that very strong caveat at this juncture when there's preliminary phases. So on the left, scenario four, where we renovate, heavy renovations to both campuses to remove the duplication of programs. However, we still have to incorporate some significant additions to address the needs of the pool, the undersized gymnasium, and undersized auditorium. So that's what's illustrated in orange. Blue is renovation, and orange is new construction. In the middle is the addition to south. South is renovated with an addition in the athletic field area on the western side of campus. And then scenario seven is a new addition on the western side of campus and taking both north and south offline. In order to do this exercise, we were given the challenge of, VJS was given the challenge of pricing a building that is not designed. So how we do that in this very preliminary cost exercise is essentially determine the size of the building. The biggest determinant of cost is the size, and then it's followed by quality. So size and quality of our site, site challenges as well, fold in as well. But we started with the exercise of determining the size of the building. So we worked closely with the core team to establish a program based on the needs. We had interviews early on with staff to understand where the shortcomings are of the current facilities, established a very intensive program spreadsheet that rolled up into a total square footage. So there's a lot of backup data behind the summary illustrated, which I realize you all cannot see, a lot of detail just to describe the size of these. What's interesting to note about these three different scenarios is the total square footage of big idea four is about 620,000 square feet. That includes obviously the 485,000 square feet of your current north and south facilities with the additions required to make the auditorium, pool, and gymnasium sufficient in size. But because we are working within the existing facility for the renovation work, it's around 620. As you move to scenarios six and seven, we are gaining some efficiencies by not having two campuses, so the total building size goes down to about 600,000 square feet, just because of the inefficiencies gained with one building. As I mentioned, there's a lot of backup data regarding the number of classrooms, the type of spaces that are incorporated in this program in the spreadsheet listed. So we determined this size and then worked with VJS to establish a construction quality assumption. So provided them with a preliminary project description that told them what it means to have a light renovation to a space and a heavy renovation. A light renovation is essentially re-creashing the finishes within the space, so flooring, ceiling, wall paints, et cetera. No walls are moving, no significant demolition associated with that type of space. Heavy renovation on the right is completely moving around walls, enlarging classroom size, there's moving program around. That's what's kind of illustrated on the right here. So we established kind of what the baseline quality expectations were for the design, and then assigned a percentage. So we determined the size, associated a percentage of renovation, or, excuse me, a percentage of renovation to each of these. So for the scenario four, what we're doing primarily renovation work, we said that's about 60% heavy renovation, about 30% light renovation, and about 10% nothing. They then are able to assign a cost to that construction. Then we obviously communicated the new addition pieces, and that has a different type of dollars per square foot, and VJS will get into that momentarily.
As Katie said, we broke it down by each scenario, heavy versus light, and the final that. And we then moved on to learning cost rate jobs. And I just want to make note that there's a few caveats to this, and everybody sees this is very, very high level. There is no designing, there's nothing in drawings. Those pictures that Katie showed of the site, they may never end up looking like that. So what we had to do is we had to establish costs for these three options based on past projects that UA has designed, past projects that we constructed, along with other projects across the state that we have in place on the job. It's two, in order to establish cost that we made it felt comfortable for the board to make decisions on going forward. As it says, it's all based on space allocation square footage. And it doesn't mean that we just took a standard number out of a book and ran that. We then had to base the costs, raising it down as much as we could to get as accurate as we possibly could. These do address site modifications. Nothing has been discussed on the site. So we have placeholders for dollars. There's a lot of traffic issues that parents do drop off almost every morning now. Getting in and getting out of here is a nightmare. So there's a lot of stuff that needs to happen on the site, and we're trying to allocate money for that as well. These are inclusive of total project cost. So when you see the numbers, this isn't just construction, it's everything that's in place to build these buildings. Everything run through a construction company, but also everything that's run through the district. We also escalated the numbers. We can work to today, there is easily to figure out the construction costs, but it's anticipated that the referendum passes that construction will start in quarter four of the 2025. So we're carrying 6.33% inflation based on the information we have today of construction inflation. All these numbers are also inclusive of the contingency costs. So we figured out the cost of construction and the cost of the district we have to decide on, and we put it to you, seeing how the trajectory of this would end in the past is. Big idea, sorry, scenario seven includes a 5% contingency with a brand new building. Generally speaking, there's very few unknowns in that, and going into a project of that size and a brand new building, 5% contingency is a very safe number. As we go down to six and four, it increases from 7.5% to 10%, respectively. As you do more renovations, there's more unknowns when you carry into a building, finding behind wall, that you're going to have to allocate more, but you don't know that yet until you start construction. So we included these to cover that. Things to note, like I said, with the capital maintenance, these aren't final construction bids. These are contract numbers where all the subcontractors and contractors have bid on this work. It's not based on a final scope or final design. All of that work will have to happen after the referendum has passed. And it is inclusive of district operational expenses, probably into that for the one. But you can see up here, here are the costs as we go across. And we talked about scenario number two, where it was the long-range capital maintenance phase over 10 years, which was almost $52 million. As you work your way from left to right, we are reducing that number because as you renovate space or add on to space or take buildings offline, your capital maintenance dollars reduce. You will see with a brand new building, though, on scenario seven, there's still capital maintenance involved in there. That's because the site has a lot of stuff that still needs to be maintained. And as we talk about the capital maintenance, tennis courts need new asphalt on the new coating, the trap's going to need to be repaved, the new coating, fencing around the site is going to have to be replaced or repaired. Paving will get addressed as you go across, but there's still going to be paving if things are damaged, they're going to be taken care of, along with the facilities at the soccer field, the toilet facility outside the football field, everything like that still needs maintenance going forward. It's hard to see back there, I know. Scenario number four, we've gone all the way to the bottom, is worth approximately $205 million. That is, the construction costs to renovate both buildings, put a new auditorium on, put a new pool on, and then add an athletic facility that'll help accommodate the size of what's missing right now. So total, all that up, along with the capital maintenance plan, or the capital maintenance dollars that still need to happen, that's $205 million. Just for the additions and renovations is $176 million. When you move on to scenario six, where we take north offline and put an addition on the south, renovation and construction is worth $232 million, more capital maintenance still to happen, total of $248 million. And scenario number seven, a brand new building, comes to, all total with capital maintenance, $276 million. In these numbers for scenario six and scenario seven, costs for the buildings that are being taken offline are included as demolition costs. That's important to note. Anything can be done with those buildings, for these numbers we landed as we are going to demolish those buildings, regrade it, and have it as a usable site for something in the future.
I'm going to pause here for questions before we get into next steps. Next steps, obviously, we have our community meetings coming up on February 20th and 29th, as Jeff mentioned. The intention for these two meetings is to give an abbreviated presentation of what we discussed on the January 29th meeting, primarily just for those who did not attend the January 29th meeting, who need the context before we jump into these big ideas or these scenarios and discussing them. So really, how did we get here? First, review a little bit of the facility study, the findings, the issues with the current facilities, and then we'll jump into discussing the scenarios. We discussed the scenario that the January 29th meeting, they did not have costs associated. So we got some really good feedback from the community members, but we presented the ideas with a caveat that it's really hard to talk about these ideas without understanding the costs holistically and the cost to the tax payer. But we will have the big ideas, the scenarios, along with the costs associated, and then the tax impact that will be linked to $100,000 up to $500,000 worth of property value. And then people can calculate for themselves what the cost would be for them on an individual basis. And then we will have engagement opportunities to hear back from the community all along the way. We'll do some similar polling like we did at the last meeting to really understand the feedback, preferred scenarios, what the advantages and challenges are to each. We have kind of two scenarios here in terms of the community-wide survey that's planned for April. The ideas, the two different scenarios here are scenario one, we take these big ideas or scenarios that we described to the community survey. So we are going to get some great feedback at the community meetings on the 20th and 29th. However, we acknowledge that the audience that will attend those meetings may be biased towards parents. And as we know, 70% of the voters are non-parents. So the community-wide survey would give a better opportunity to test these ideas at a broader scale. The next scenario would be the board would decide to further focus the scenarios that we've presented and then take a limited amount to survey. So this would be the board saying, hey, we think we've gotten some great feedback at some of the community meetings that we've had, and we'd like to survey only scenario four and scenario seven, or scenario four and scenario six, or whatever options you feel comfortable surveying to the community, limiting the focus. Obviously, that is up to your discretion on whether you want to make some preliminary decisions or take all of the options to the community and let them decide in the survey. Just a reminder kind of where we are in the schedule, all of these milestones are backed out from a potential November referendum. And we are, hard to see in this graphic, but we are here. The blue is illustrating in the overall schedule, assessment, and various options that we're exploring, and the red is opportunities for community engagement. So we are really kind of taking all of the scenarios and options and costs associated to the community now, getting feedback, further refining, to eventually ideally get to a November referendum, if that is the decision of the board to go there. Any questions?
Okay.
Yeah?
So nice to see a big crowd here tonight, because here's some of this, and I know we went through it fairly quickly. We spent two hours at the last January 29th community session. We'll plan another two-hour session the next time we go on February 20th through 29th. And I hope all of you will come back and bring five of your friends with you. We want the community to weigh in on these ideas and feel like you're a part of these decisions, the critical feedback. So that's why we need you at those meetings, to understand the context, understand our financial context. Why are the buildings in the shape they are? Why aren't we spending the dollars we need to on building these facilities within our operating budget? Come to those sessions and learn more about that. And it comes down to the state funding formula and what we are required to work under. And so I can go into a whole hour session on school finance funding, and I think it would be really beneficial for our community. I won't do that tonight, but maybe I'll say that on the 20th, by night. Not an hour, I only give five minutes.
Are there any questions from the board? If not, Kate, thank you. Thank you both for, again, going through this information. The board has been privileged to kind of sit through this twice now, and it helps us digest. I think there was opportunity at the committee meeting when we presented this, there was a bit more robust discussion, a few more questions, but to hear it a second time is certainly very helpful, and certainly is for our audience. So thank you so much.
Just one last thing. We have a facilities planning tab on our website that if you want to speed yourself up to speed with where we're at, go onto that website that facilities planning tab and review some of the information. Come into February 20th with your questions and comments and feedback. And 29th.
Thank you, Jeff. I just want to reinforce, bring your neighbors, bring your friends, bring people here on the 20th or 29th. We need everyone to see the facility, understand the material, understand why we're going in the direction that we're going. We hope to have all of them there. Okay, our superintendent's report is up next with an update on issues related to false safety threat on February 29th.
Thank you. I wasn't going to spend a lot of time on the timeline, but since a couple people mentioned that I was going to, I will run through that. It's not really pertinent, but just so people know, we got a call around 9:50 in the morning on Friday, anonymous call about a rumor of a threat. At 9:55, Adam Holt was able to connect with that person and try to get more explanation about what was going on. It was not a typical report of a threat, because normally you don't have all of this, they didn't want their child to be talked to, the kid didn't want to leave school, student wanted to take a test, parent didn't want to know if their name's used, all of that, very unusual. That does not typically translate to what we would consider an actual concern. Immediately, we get suspicious about that sort of thing, but we always act, and we always are very thorough. And contacted county sheriff at 10 o'clock so that they could assist us with investigating the complaint. By 10:15, we had a student come to the main office, said his mom told him to come to the main office and let him know she wanted him to leave school because of a message that they had received by text. At that time, we started to get wind of the fact that the news was rampantly known, unbeknownst to us, because no one had let us know sooner, that there were all these parents and students sharing text messages about a possible rumor of a threat. By 11:00 AM, the sheriff stated they could find no source of a shooting, no credible threat whatsoever. We started to get the communications together to get that information out to people, so by 11:14, we had it on Facebook, by 11:16, we had the email tall staff. And around 11:30, we sent out the Sky Alert message, because it takes a little bit of time and gets everybody, so that they all knew there was no threat of any time. Somewhere during the day, we don't know when, Lake Country 411 Facebook page put up a message, completely false message, saying that teacher had been threatened with a stabbing, apparently, and there was a shooter going on, and it was all completely false. And from around noon to 2 o'clock, Principal Adam Kurt and I were monitoring the south campus pickup area for two hours when we were out there, Ryan, Megan, and the flight directors in the lobby. And we were there telling people it was safe, telling people it was secure, and we were monitoring and watching the parking lot as parents were coming to pick up kids and students were leaving. So that's, in essence, the timeline. But what I wanted to comment on, and I'm going to do something I don't usually do, is just kind of read from a prepared statement, but I think people need to know, possible threats or concerns are brought to the attention of public school administrators on a regular basis. With social media, smartphones, tip lines, there's an incredible volume of communication between and among members of every learning community. When thousands of messages are constantly being exchanged, every minute, there are going to be angry words, there's going to be inappropriate conversations, there are going to be messages that ultimately people regret, and some messages may actually be threats, and some could be interpreted as threats. When responsible individuals see something that could be a threat, or otherwise have a legitimate concern about the safety of our students and staff, they contact law enforcement or the district. I'm going to repeat that. When people know of a threat and they really care about our safety, they contact law enforcement or the district, or both. That allows the authorities who are trained and responsible to investigate and take the necessary and appropriate action. The concern almost always ends up being false, or exaggerated, or a comment that was made unjust, or a misunderstanding, or a misinterpretation of something someone said, or thought they said, or thought they heard. There are communications where someone will state that they're going to do harm to someone, but after we talk to them, we find out the words that they expressed came out when they were upset, they really don't have any interest in hurting anyone, they said they would never hurt anyone, they don't have access to anything that could hurt someone. And that's a very typical thing of the investigations that we do. Some potential threats appear to be made out of thin air, but regardless- But regardless of the nature, we get to the source, we thoroughly investigate, we get the facts, and we take whatever appropriate action is necessary with the individuals who are involved. With no one in danger, we don't interrupt our daily routines, so our students and staff can focus on learning. When we learned of the alleged threat last Friday, we initiated the same protocol that has worked many, many, many times over the past two years. The difference between all the previous situations and Friday is we are normally one of the first, if not the first, to be notified about a threat or a concern. That enables us to be out in front of it. And again, if somebody really is aware of a concern, I am trying to understand why they wouldn't go to the authorities first. In the case of Friday's alleged threat, it's clear the district and law enforcement were nowhere near the first to be made aware of the concern. For whatever reason, many parents and students were texting and talking to each other about a completely unsubstantiated rumor before contacting law enforcement. In fact, no one contacted law enforcement until Adam Bolt, our Director of Student Services, contacted law enforcement. We had no way of knowing how many parents and students were posting or texting or calling each other about this false rumor. And by the time we were confident there was no threat, hundreds of parents had already told their children to leave school. We have successfully used our current protocol so many times over the past two years, and we had never had to disrupt our school, our normal school day. We work with law enforcement to get to the source of a possible threat as quickly as possible. Usually, it's less than an hour. It's often less than half an hour. Sometimes, it's a matter of minutes. Our procedures have worked, in part, because we became aware of the alleged threat before false unsubstantiated rumors were spread via text and social media. To the best of our knowledge, this is the first time a false rumor was spread before anyone contacted us. I hope it's the last. This is the first time an adult posted a totally false statement on a local Facebook page that also contributed to spreading this rumor about a completely non-existent threat. We can only control how we respond to any situation. But if someone has actually seen or heard something that could be considered a threat and they are truly concerned about the safety of our students and staff, we cannot understand or explain why do we not go to the authorities first? That is a key difference that rendered our usually effective protocols ineffective. We are reflecting and developing our next steps. We are absolutely with dangerous. We've spent the majority of all the time between Friday and today rehashing, talking through what we could have done differently, looking at video, looking at our procedures, looking at protocols, reaching out to companies about getting the ability to text message to parents. We are acting. Our staff cares about our kids. Some of the messages I've received, you know, it's hard not to get angry and it's hard not to be emotional. Because anybody that would imply that we don't care about these kids, you can't be more wrong. We are always doing everything we can to make sure everyone in our building is safe. So we're looking at going to lockdown upon receiving any threat or rumor of a threat. We're looking at that. I don't know if that's the right idea. Everyone needs to understand, we don't go to lockdown lightly. Some people call it soft lockdown and act like it's not a big deal. Any kind of lockdown is a big deal. Lockdowns cause anxiety. Lockdowns cause fear. Lockdowns get people upset. Lockdowns raise emotions. They're not a small thing. So people shouldn't just say, why didn't you just go to lockdown? It's not that simple. You also don't want to go to lockdown so often that kids get desensitized to lockdown. If anybody's been in a school and sees what happens during a fire drill when a fire alarm goes off, there's no panic, there's no hysteria, there's no worry, there's no concern. No one takes it seriously. We do the drills because it's required by the state. We have to do it every month. Kids are desensitized to it. I don't want that. I don't want them ever to be desensitized to a potential threat. But we're going to look at it and see if that's what we have to do. If our community is okay with lockdowns happening on a regular basis, that could be an option. We've already entered into a contract with the company so that we can use text messages to get to parent cell phones instead of email. That's absolutely something we can do, should do, we will do. That's something we've already learned from this. But again, our current protocols worked so many times in the past two years. It's really difficult to say that somehow that was a failure this time when we weren't made aware of the issue in a timely manner. We're going to communicate with our students and our staff sooner and more often throughout the day. And we're going to use the P A system. We're going to use other communication messages, messaging options to make sure that we are communicating better. As I said, we are under learn. And we're going to put a greater emphasis on proactive communication with students and parents about the proper response to rumors or any information that threatens the safety of students and staff. We need to get our students to come to us instead of texting their parents if they hear a rumor about a threat at school. We need to get parents to go to the police if they hear about a threat that's going on at the school. This idea that they're all talking to each other and the authorities aren't involved doesn't make any sense to me. One challenge that we have, or a major challenge we have, is everything about these situations, we have to react to what others are doing. We can't proactively stop threats. We can't proactively make everybody stop doing that sort of thing. So we're asked to have all the answers, all the questions. We get shots taken at us in hindsight when it's very easy to criticize. But neither the administration or the sheriff department stop parents from creating a false threat and then texting that to students and other parents instead of notifying law enforcement. We can't stop students from texting their parents instead of the administration or the SRO when they hear students are talking about a non-existent threat. We can't make anyone contact law enforcement or the administration before texting each other. We can't stop anyone from posting false information on Facebook or other social media. We can't stop parents from driving to school and telling their children to leave the building, even though that may be the absolute wrong thing to do. And we cannot control the myriad different ways individuals respond to receiving false information. When all you can do is react, you compare as best as possible for as many scenarios as you can imagine, but it is impossible to predict every possible situation that can happen. We will continue to recognize our power to keep our students and our staff safe. We will continue to evaluate our procedures and develop ways to improve. We're going to do our part to learn and adjust what we can control. How to manage all the behaviors and reactions we cannot control is going to be our greatest challenge. Two last points. I cannot emphasize enough, the most important point, which is our students and staff were never in any danger on Friday. We've experienced, we have an experienced administrative team, dedicated teachers and staff. We have a strong relationship with local law enforcement. We have great students. We keep our students and each other safe. I can't emphasize enough, there was never a threat at any point, ever. No one was ever in danger. We communicated that out, it was basically ignored. So we're going to learn, as I said, and do better. We've already used the procedures, and we found out that they're necessarily going to work moving forward, so we're going to be able to change. We actually are very lucky. We're going to learn more from this than what any drill would teach us, what any simulation would teach us. This was an awesome opportunity, and no one was ever in danger, no one close to getting hurt. So in many ways, we should consider us lucky that we can learn from what happened in such a valuable way. And this last one, I don't know how much of a point I, I don't want to argue with anybody. I was there, I was out there with the students. Other administrators were out there with the students and staff. I take issue with the word hysteria. I'm not saying some people might not have legitimately had concerns or been afraid and had some fear. That breaks all of our hearts to hear that, because we don't want our students to ever feel that way at school, and we're going to do everything we can to make sure that doesn't happen again. I didn't see any hysteria. Our students were calm. Our parents that came to pick up their children were calm, they were appropriate, they were driving normally, they were taking turns, they were letting people in. Our students were walking and talking and smiling and joking. Characterizing it as hysteria is a bit of sensationalization, I would say. Our students were leaving. Nobody was running, screaming, pushing, tripping, crying, arms flailing, whiteouts, cars going over curbs. I mean, what I would consider hysteria, nothing like that was happening. It didn't look much different from our normal dismissal times, by the way. Anybody that's there or sees, it's packed. We have tight spaces. We don't have a lot of room. Cars back up. But everybody is so good about how they handle that situation. I just take issue with anybody that characterizes it as hysteria. And again, if you feel that, I'm not going to argue, and I could say wrong. We can respect each other's opinions. But I really, I feel it's doing a disservice to everybody that did such an excellent job in responding to what happened. So concluding, please don't believe everything you read, whether in the newspaper or in an unusual text that you get from a friend or family member. Please seek the truth from people who can verify it before you believe or pass on information that's not accurate. If you ever hear or see something that seems like an actual threat, please contact law enforcement before you share with anybody else. We are always doing our best to keep our students and our staff safe. We need our parents and the rest of the community to also do their best. That's all I have, happy to answer questions.
Are there any questions from the board?
I have a question. I wanted to ask a question about what happened in the classroom. Because I had a call from my mom. And my mom called me up after the class. My mom said, what's happening? And she was like, the girl at school, she was like, at your school. And the first thing I said to my mom was, do you know about this, like, what you're talking about? She was like, I don't know, it's just what I'm hearing. And I was like, okay, I'm going to go talk to the officers about this. And she goes to the office, and all I told was to go back to the classroom. Tell everybody who's at school, like, who don't want to talk to, I was like, oh.
And I don't know what we knew at that time, so we may not have anything that we could share, but that would be our answer, because the class is where you'll be safest. And that's how we're going to communicate out to our students, is through our staff. So we do want you in our classrooms. That's what we want to do. So I'm glad you went to the office. Smart move, I'm glad you did that. And when they told you to go back to class, we need you to go back to class. We will communicate as soon as they know something. And we're going to do better to make sure that you know that there isn't any problem. We absolutely are going to do better. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Congress. Would someone mind catching the line? Okay, with that, we're going to go into our public comment portion of our meeting. As you have a few rules of engagement, the typical things I read. The communications and comments from members of the public agenda item requires, anyone wishing to speak to the board must be present and register on a sign-up form. A three-minute time limit is enforced. Public comment is only accepted during this agenda item. Sharing of minutes and another person addressing the board is not permitted. Speakers should address the board as a whole, not individual members, and should remain polite and respectful. Only the board president may respond to comments or questions. The board president has the authority to ask another board member or minister to respond. Board members will not respond to public comments unless designated by the board president. The board president has the authority to cease any conversation at any time for any reason. Public comments will be taken under advisement. If public comments are in regard to an agenda item and the board discusses that particular item during the meeting, the board may or may not address the comments, questions raised by the public. Only the board will discuss and/or take action. There will be no citizen communications during the time of agenda topics. And lastly, speakers are not immune from legal consequences related to the content of their speech. Before we move to our first speaker, I would like to read a statement. That's relative to the incident that happened early last week. There are no words that can be said that will take the sting out of what's been done. And perhaps that's for the best. As most of us would agree, mistakes well paid for often provide the best opportunity for insights and accountability, growth, and positive change. The school board is unequivocal in the following message. It is completely unacceptable for students and any member of our school community to engage in racist language for activities. Use of the N-word on anyone on our school campus will not be tolerated. If individuals decide to engage in such conduct, the school board recognizes the authority of the Arrowhead administration to promptly investigate and assign the appropriate consequences for the offensive behavior. Our school board stands in agreement that the disciplinary actions taken by our administration last week were appropriate. Additionally, members of our administrative team have circled with all students and parents to educate and discipline the offenders, as well as talk with and support those students on the receiving end of this objectionable act. Staff continue to monitor and address the needs of our students. Stepping away from policy and procedure, stepping back from my role of president and board. I assume the persona becomes most natural to me. That of a mom. From that vantage point, my heart breaks. For those students seated at a lunch table, feeling the pain of age-old, hurtful language, my heart also breaks for our young students. Caught up in a world where there exist crushing consequences for social media posts, I ask my fellow parents to recall your behaviors and decision-making as a part of the team. Perhaps you are like me, breathing a sigh of relief that phone cameras and social media could not capture every bad choice that I made. We all do bad and hurtful things because we are all human. If not forgiveness and grace now, then when? Like others on the school board, I have been a part of the Lake Country community for a long time. I am proud of the strong family values, ethical conduct, and high levels of stewardship seen daily in our community. I'm likewise proud of our Arrowhead students, whose academic and co-curricular accomplishments and exceptional levels of student service are worthy of our recognition. We live in an amazing community that produces some pretty amazing kids. We're at an important inflection point right now. Please, do not confuse the actions of one with the actions of the whole. Do not confuse the absolute necessity of addressing unacceptable behavior of one student with a desire to correct behavior of an entire community. Be that community within these walls from beyond. Moving forward, the board and administration will engage in discussion to determine any actions that should be employed to curtail racism at Arrowhead. All activities approved by the board will assuredly continue to align with the pro-student, pro-parent approach employed by the board in the past. As a board, we condemn the incident of last week. We offer our sincerest apology to those students who have faced this, indeed any insult of racism. And we encourage our community to continue to stand strong together as this board and the administration move forward to address the concerns arising from that incident. With that, we'll move to our first speaker. Amy Harker Murray.
Thanks for the opportunity. I'm going to be a little bit further down the line of speakers today. But I'd like to take out the chance to speak to the board and administration, specifically the state for the state. My comments tonight will address last week's notification of the incident that you just proposed. As a parent and as an adult who does not walk these halls, I don't know how much of that was an isolated incident or something that is a more pervasive issue here at Arrowhead. If it's not an isolated incident, as you alluded to, then obviously we have work to do as a community, as a school community, to make this a safe space for all students, which I know is what the board has wanted to do. But I think it's also unfair for us to lay the blame at the feet of the school and the administration staff that are the school board. Because children learn things not only at school and not only at home, but also in the community as well. And I can tell you some of the social media posts and some of the responses back to this incident, but I have to disagree with you that we do have a problem in our community. And there are some adults who commented on that post and seem to indicate that maybe the students in the background had done something or said something to deserve being called or anything like that. So I want to make it clear, using words like that only serve to belittle, demean, and to humiliate fellow human beings. Those other human beings are our fathers, our mothers, our children, and our grandparents of our birth. And I think we need to work better as, work better together as an entirely country community to root this out and to work together to be, and to ensure that all of our citizens and fellow Buffaloans feel welcome, safe, and respected. And again, I want to be real clear that this is not just a school issue. And I think it's unfair to lay it completely at Arrowhead's feet, because it's a community issue. And we need to rise to the occasion and be better. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Santonia Martin.
Yeah, do I? First, I want to say I was a person to actually approach the petition first. And I apologize and offended anybody. My son can sit to me. It really bothered me for real because I brought him all the way here from Georgia just to play football for his brother. We all get the business and that's to get to the next level, couldn't we been doing torture? Right? His mind put the bells on him. It's tough. And like I'm just looking at racism. I look at everybody's hope we all want, we all need to say, no matter what color we're in. I can't, I coached that first one. I look at all those kids as I was meant to do to them. And I feel like I can teach them something better than what it's my own fault. No matter what, won a championship and also coached the Lake Country Chiefs. Those, those parents that let their kids, trust me, their kids, I still look at their kids like they were all, no matter what color they is. I was trying to hold black coach on kids, wrong, black kids. But I treated everybody the same. I don't even know what racism is, but I never looked at it like that. I just read life. It's the first time this matter happened with my kid. But I go through this every day. I've been to just seven times last year in State of Wisconsin. Pretty much nothing that I did to just be seen in a car like that. Was known as a Kia, a Kia boy says I'm black. They want to pull me over without writing the license plate. For that, I said, oh, they sorry, but still. Stuff I can do. Over my car door, put me on the guard. My 25 years went to my house and he got my license in his hands. So my thing was, I go through this every day for my kids to live the right way. I think this kid, he's good. His program is great. The principal, I don't know her name, but she was like, sitting down with my son, he was about to cry. She was about to suspend him for some of his football games. I had to tell him, don't cry. It's okay with that. But basically, when one incident happened, when he got suspended, he worried first. What popped me and dropped that he was trying to escalate the situation, get out the way. And she was sitting down telling the community, their community, like we were a part of, their community. This is just how it is and what it is. So when I posted that picture and gave it to him, I just wanted to get his people behind him, but he's okay. He got people to back him up too. That's it. That's all. I didn't cause no harm. I don't blew up the way I would, but you know. Some people say I did the right thing. Some people ask for why I did it. But like I said, we still all, we still one. I love everyone in here. I love the community. And it's part of the vibes that they're on and out. And I talked to him. I never know what he going through because he barely talks, so you know. But we had to win two championships because we got two years left. We're gonna do, now you do. I hope y'all back us up.
How is your sound good?
All right. All right. We're gonna go to the next one. I want to be one, the one, the one scholarship that's kind of just stay focused. Because I lost my family behind me. My wife, she left. Breaking off my first daughter, took my two sons, my three sons to go to Dallas after this. So it's been me and Tolya right now. And for those who think it's tough, we. So it is what it is. You know, stay strong with each other.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. We really appreciate your comments. Next up on our agenda is our consent agenda. And I would invite Craig Thompson to address our donation.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much after that rather emotional experience just a moment ago. I'm not quite ready, but I'm getting there. Thank you to Tim for giving me the opportunity. I have, I have now become accustomed to simply giving a thank you back to the community who donates to us on a regular basis for various needs around Arrowhead High School. On the list today, I simply want to thank on behalf of the board, Strowing Industries for donation to AHS Technology and Engineering. We also want to thank Urban Manufacturing for similarly a donation to AHS Technology and Engineering. And Versable Inc. for likewise donation to AHS Technology and Engineering. Thank you to each one of you organizations for your contributions to our educational toward.
Thank you, Craig. So our consent agenda consists of January 10th, on T24, where the school board needs a minute, January bill list, donations, and lastly, resignations, retirements, contracts, and letters of appointment. Do any board members like to select out any of those particular items for a specific conversation? If not, I'm looking for a motion to approve the entire consent agenda.
A second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approval of our consent agenda, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. First up with committee reports is curriculum with Chairperson Hammer.
We had a meeting on January 25th at 6:45. And what we've been doing lately is in each one of our curriculum committee meetings, we have a specific department come and go over the classes they teach, scheduling, things like that. At this meeting, it was the Science Department. Brian Corey came in and gave an overview of the Science Department, the requirements, class options, pathways. And Sue Cassetta reviewed the data of student achievement in science. So it was a good learning experience for our committee as usual and others in attendance. There was another topic for graduation. In the past, some people have expressed concern that the military, students going into the military weren't being noticed as, recognized as they properly thought some of the military people should. Principal Kurt went over the graduation specifics and how each different child is addressed in different groups and things like that. And what we did conclude was we would be adding assigning for students going to the military, kind of like what we do for children going into sports at specific colleges or the special needs children going off to a college. We're adding military, those volunteering for the military to have assigned. And then the meeting went on for quite a while. We had to change our agenda a little bit. But first, Sue provided information from the school closing and virtual learning and how that went based on that snow day that we had to prepare for, which was kind of came out of nowhere. And then we discussed the AP, Advanced Placefield Classes, scheduling decision. And Sue, if you would like to review that, absolutely. So linked in the agenda this evening is a memo from Superintendent Farmer regarding some of the points that were made in that discussion at the curriculum committee meeting. It was discussed there as our students are making course selections. Adam Kurt and I had spent significant time taking a look at various ways we could structure those nine AP classes. So for people in the audience or for others who have forgotten, we have 20 AP classes here at Arrowhead, but nine of which have historically been given extended time. So right now in our current temporary day, that's 60 minutes, a full hour of instruction for those nine classes. That's AP Calc AP, AP Calc BC, AP Physics C, which is a combination of mechanics and ENEM, which are two classes that can be, two tests rather, that can be taken in AP. AP Bio, AP Chem, AP Literature, AP Language and Chapter position, AP US history, and AP Europe industry. As we've really started to look at ways in which we could structure to maintain that time, we run into a lot of significant challenges to consider. Most importantly, I think it's just the fact that we know that the way we've extended those 60-minute APs, while important for students, the instructional minutes, we know it creates conflict in our schedule. Often times, our students who are taking one or two or three of those extended AP classes want to take a lot of AP classes. So we started to recognize some of the challenges by maintaining that extended time, what that was posing for us as we looked at teacher FTP, full-time equivalency, and how we can structure teacher schedules. We were mindful as well of student schedules. We have a lot of success in our AP program and we're proud of our AP program. Our teachers are very proud of what they're able to accomplish with students. There's a lot to celebrate there. So maintaining the extended time for instruction is a factor to consider. However, another factor to consider is, I think, some of the participation rates that we're also take a look at. We want high participation in AP. Those experiences for our students create really good college preparatory experiences. So we want to create a schedule where we know students can take the classes that they desire to take and have enough instructional support to do well in those classes. Pulls are important to us. So as we've spent some time taking a look at what is possible, I want to draw your attention in the linked document that was shared regarding sort of the upside of maintaining those instructional minutes for our students, somewhat the downside. And I want to share with you also some of the conversations that I've had with our instructors at those classes because I think understanding their perspective at this point and juncture is really important too. So in the upside of maintaining that and the structure that we've designed to do so would mean, we can't offer the year, or I'm sorry, the 60-minute classes in the block. It would, every day it would really mess up a lot of the student scheduling opportunities. But what we were able to structure was an everyday block, one semester for those classes. So that would be 84 minutes every day rather than every other day, 85. I didn't get that right. 85 minutes every other day. And then the opposite semester, they would go into the alternative block. That would actually grow their instructional minutes by just a little bit. Student support in the class would be very high, be very intense for those classes. If you're thinking about taking AP Calc BC or AP Physics Calculus based class, intense semester, but we would maintain that student support in the class. The curriculum structure wouldn't, we still have to show because the pacing would look different than the way the classes are currently structured. We would maintain our high pass rate, which in AP world, and the AP exam is a three, four, or five. Most colleges and universities require a four, five, or credit. So we know that for some of the AP classes, like in science classes, for example, 25% of the curriculum has to be spent in labs. For example, AP Bio requires sort of must do 13 labs within the school year that might be take. Well, right now in the structure that they take a whole period, our students currently take, probably have exposure to more than 20 or 25 of the labs. So we are able to do that based on the extended time that we're able to do them. The downside of maintaining those minutes also needs to be considered. And students have already, with the course selection time just closing on Monday, families have reached out to us and on the whole, not completely, but on the whole, families have said we're concerned that we're not able to take the classes in our, that we have in our four-year plan. And truth be told, the way the structure of the schedule currently is now, if you are taking a lot of those extended AP classes, it is likely that you were going to conflict out of a lot of those. It's just not a great way to build out a master schedule. So that's not a new concern that was, that emerged last week or the week prior regarding school scheduling. But the downside puts the emphasis for those AP classes. I think it's important to recognize we have other, 11 other AP classes with also rigorous curriculum that currently doesn't get the extended time. And so we're concerned about that continued inequity among AP classes in which 20, 25 years ago, when AP curriculum design has been completely redone, we've maintained that extended time. And it's not to say that in science classes, they don't need necessarily that extended time. But as I have spoken with a lot of the teachers, those classes, there isn't the same feeling. They know they can find success and rework the curriculum to fit it in 85 minutes. Science is the exception, and it's simply because there's a high level of need, high level of need lab base, which has to take place in the classroom and a lot of content cover searches. So the downside is if we maintain that additional time, we're really putting a lot of emphasis on those AP classes and it will cause course conflicts for the students to be able to participate in as many AP classes as possible. Some will tell you that for some students, they can manage five, six, seven AP classes in their classroom. And good, that's great. We want to be able to support that pathway. By moving to the 85 minutes, we should, by maintaining the extended time, I should say, we're able to sort of naturally forewalk students over with themselves. But it's systemically, not necessarily something that you can say these kids can have this many AP classes and they shouldn't. Kind of up to the individual student to consider. But when we've had those extended hours, it did hold back to a degree, students overstepping themselves. So we just want really the board members to be aware of the issues associated with this change. So we're having kind of an open, transparent conversation so that as we move into scheduling time, people kind of understand the nuances that go into AP, those nine particular AP classes and the decision to move away from some of that extended time to 85 minutes. I want to also emphasize when talking to the instructors, how really impressed I am at how they're wrapping their heads around not only moving to the block, but identifying ways that they can really get at the school sequence. There's a lot of really good problem solving happening. Again, the lab-based approach is the one that continues to concern me. So that's why the motion before you today to consider is not necessarily all or nothing, but it's to give us the flexibility as we see those course numbers come in that we're able to make the best possible master schedule for our students as possible. We know that time is a factor. Having that 60 minutes of time for those nine classes exceeds time for those classes that anywhere I've seen. I think at least locally in Southeastern Wisconsin, we know time could be a huge factor for our success. We want high participation and we want high success. I know the commitment of our teachers and I know that moving to the 85 minutes every other day won't necessarily equate to students not finding success. But we know an implementation of change. We just want everybody to be aware that that is a significant change and it's a loss of some instructional time for students. One other factor that teachers brought forward that's really important to consider. In moving to this schedule, the AAB block schedule, we also added a resource period. And in that resource period, which we've not had as a systemic support until next year, can be utilized really purposefully in helping students, not just AP students, but of course we put it in place to help all students. But utilizing that, if we do move more of those extended period classes to 85 minutes where they've lost instructional time, we do pick up some instructional time that can be very purposeful. Extra practice sets in the help classes, extra writing opportunities, opportunities to meet one-on-one with your teacher, and that. And that to support students that are stretching themselves through those nine AP classes is a fourth thing to consider. So the course load piece, I also want to hit on the fact that as we move forward, not just with these nine AP classes, but of course for our entire AP program, a lot is being put into vertical alignment of classes. We're not completely there yet. We don't have it all structured to front-load some of the content that might support AP classes, but that can be a consideration as we move forward. Teachers also help me consider the fact that there are programs, bridge to AP, that we could build in over time. If we go to the 85 minutes and we're losing some instructional time, we could build in some time with some bridge coursework that could be, you know, summer coursework that gets participated in, those kinds of things. In moving to the 85 minutes, there was teacher concern among those nine classes that homework, which is right now not very heavy, considering the fact that it's a college class. What teachers shared with me in terms of homework load was that oftentimes students are given a homework assignment that they have maybe the week to complete, or sometimes two weeks to complete, and some of that workload would have to shift. Remember, these AP classes are college classes, and so you would expect that some of that ownership would have to fall, kind of fall on students. But our teachers are very, very cognizant of not overloading students as a result of the schedule change. So that, I think there's good thinking all around about what that could look like if we moved to 85 minutes for those classes. Another thing that was shared too is the opportunity to bring in more of college credit in high school as another option for these AP classes. AP US History, for example, is a rigorous, rigorous class, full of content. In fact, the AP College Board is taking a look at, breaking that class into two classes because there's so much content in it. We lose a lot of time because of the structure of where AP tests are taken in May. We begin school in the state of Wisconsin, as we all well know, in September. By offering a different option for college credit through University of Wisconsin, Green Bay, and Milwaukee, and Whitewater, and Oshkosh, they all offer these dual-credit classes. We could offer both so that students wouldn't be bound by the timeline by AP, but could still earn college credit through our university system. So there's really good innovative thinking around the needs of our students and why they take some of these AP classes. So I think it's important just to recognize those conversations. Just in summary, I think the administrative team, as we've been having conversations with teachers and talking about it, we would like to move as many classes of these nine to 85-minute every other day, but would likely give them the flexibility if some of those classes still need that extended time. That's my impression.
So just before you finished, you addressed a question that was in my mind during your speaking, and that had to do with the timing in May when these tests are taken. Will a change of this nature, how would you perceive that impacting student success based on the timing of the exams themselves, within itself apart from the dual credit?
We don't get to select those dates. Those dates are selected for us from the College Board. And so if we are able to transition into like a CCIHS, which is the College Credit and High School Program through W Green Bay or something like that, we gain five or six weeks of instructional time. Students earn the college credit. That's very transferable to a lot of universities. A lot of high schools offer both within the same class. So students could still opt to take that AP exam, which could give them a three, four, or five, and is transferable and usable in a lot of universities. And they could check in and pay for the credits through the university system that we would partner with. So there's some good options there. The Higher Learning Commission just in January adjusted what it requires for instructors for dual-credit that we are thinking will allow for some more flexibility than what they have for pass, which required a master's degree or greater within the content area. And now they use learned experience in a lot of universities to identify and choose dual-credit classes.
Yeah, one question. Is it safe to assume that for this first year, you'll make your base plan? You'll pick which one should stay?
Based on course requests mostly.
Is it safe to assume that we use this entire year to evaluate, was that right? And that essentially make it shift?
Yeah, I don't want to put a sunset on any decision in that regard because I think once you get to fall rulings, it is hard to be honest. We don't have to hold out from that. I mean, you just don't get to stop. Teachers are teaching their classes and making adjustments to curriculum kind of at the same time. So while that would be a desire, I think we have to acknowledge the fact that there's just so much content in those lab-based classes that perhaps that's just the structure we have to maintain. Perhaps we could look to build that with that vertical planning that we talked about, but I think that would be several years further.
Would it be safe to assume, Sue, that teachers would kind of naturally put legs for students that are kind of right on the bubble to encourage them with real frequency to utilize the resource period and get them in there frequently to them? Press the amount of time that there's been.
The time is, you know, it's a variable factor, right, for different students for what they need to process, you know, the curriculum. But absolutely, utilizing assessment data and other things that they're noticing, observing in class, that would be a really good, purposeful way to utilize that time. Impetus behind the resource period that I shared with the board many times was more along the line with struggling to learn and need to make sure those students are in the support they need. But this is, this time could be so focusful for the students, especially those that are stretching themselves in AP classes like these. We want to make sure that they've got the proper support as well. We want success. There's just a lot of factors in what makes a master schedule at high school our size. We also want to make sure we can maximize opportunity. We don't want them to stretch themselves too far, and that does happen. And so monitoring that, and teachers are very cognizant of that, all the conversations that I've had. They recognize the why behind moving everybody on the same schedule, but they want to make sure kids are supported. So those are really the whole conversations. Very impressed with our staff trying to follow some.
Given that this is an action item, should we make a position?
The motion before us would be, effective with the 2024-25 school year, move to authorize the administration to schedule as many advanced placement classes as possible in the same manner as other classes on block every other day. Is there any further discussion? Hold on, favor, say aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Sue.
And to end up with the committee report, we had to scrap the potential jazz band trip discussion for next month's meeting, or this one's meeting, actually. So that will be on the agenda. And then the World Language Department will be given a presentation at the March committee meeting. February, this one. It should be February. Change that. And there was one other topic we had mentioned at the close of the policy meeting regarding textbooks and selections and how about that and the rotating years like that. So that will be the topic. So our next committee meeting is February 22nd at 6:45.
Thank you very much, Chairperson Heber. Moving on to Finance and Legislation, Co-Chairs, Hevers and Dees.
Sure. We had a meeting on January 26th. We had some guests from EUA and JS there, or a good portion of our agenda item. And honestly, what we saw tonight was really the culmination of what we discussed to build up to tonight. So really no point in going back and discussing building out those details. What you saw tonight is more fresh and relevant. Additionally, in there, we reviewed, continue to review the, what I think is a fantastic forecast tool that Mr. Gross is building out, that's becoming our five-year financial plan model. We spent some time in there going into that more detail, which is really building the case and justification for a lot of the conversation we had around potential referendum and continue to keep that as a standing agenda item as we go forward. And then the other portion of the meeting was to circle back around to topics that we had a few months back around sub-teams made up of board and administration members to continue to help with items around, let's say, referendum preparation and discussion with community as well as other things like contingency planning, if there isn't a recommendation to move forward with one or if it were to not pass. And what we had, and I decided culminated from that meeting, was to not have multiple sub-teams, but essentially have a, I don't want to call it a board meeting, but a meeting that would be held kind of on opposite Wednesdays of this regular board meeting to just do that and essentially bring members of the board, as well as admin, as well as community, and JS and EUA to continue to just discuss those things openly. It would not be a decision-making meeting whatsoever, but to really just keep that dialogue going to make sure that we have the right involvement, flush the things out, and flush it out. That was what I put in that email summary just a couple of weeks back to the board, just to have that discussion here. I don't think there's any action we need out of here if we agree with that's something we want to do. The action that comes, we would set a schedule, pick a date up in the first one of those. So let's kind of open that up for a discussion. I think the members that attended the FNL meeting that morning were all in alignment. That's the right path to take, but I know there were some members not present. So open it up. Any concern? I would just say if there were any concerns moving forward with that type of plan.
And so would the meetings be in the evening or?
The thought would be evenings because we would get greater community support versus a 6:45 in the morning type of thing. So the thought would be on the Wednesday evenings, essentially two Wednesdays after tonight, or like two Wednesdays after the school.
I have a regular Wednesday night commitment, just once a month. Made that commitment, although that feels really consistent and creative.
Sure, sure. And I don't think anyone is, I don't think anyone explicitly sets on that it has to be a Wednesday. That was the idea that was thrown out, so I think give you some planning and scheduling behind this. So I think more importantly is just the commitment that something like that would be beneficial and will give the first one scheduled.
And importantly, we're missing one of our members who did very vocal on this as well. Brandon, okay.
Okay, so what I'll take the action then, put something out to the administrative support that we would need involves the board then to select our first stage.
And I have said, I have a objection to moving ahead on Wednesday's, advising that my participation would be with them.
Understood.
How many Wednesdays going forward? Do you need, we're setting like how many months out or?
I think as we build up to April, that'd be like one of the next milestones. I think we overlay the current EUA plan and then build out, I think, the appropriate timing for the meeting shift. And I see it's hard to predict. I think we will constantly come up with agenda items and things to discuss. One of the meatier ones, meatier topics would be around that contingency planning that we just don't ever really get to drill into during a regular VNG or a regular FNL. But I think we have to spend some of that in time also. We could consume a lot of meetings just with that.
I know they're the same old as Tim, but I have certain Wednesdays every month. I miss my play button.
So yeah, just look through and maybe, so it sounds like at least two members, Wednesday is not a good option. Folks could set the other days of the week that you know are not good options. And I'll try to work through something that's.
Would you mind sending out a prompt to the board?
I will. We adjourned and scheduled the next meeting then for February 16th. We have that agenda built out. So a lot of people on Friday, February 16th. Can I mention anything? Mr. Gross?
Thank you very much. Chairperson Hevers. Moving on to Building and Grounds, Chairperson Becker.
I will actually refer this to Ben and Tim. I've been absent for the past couple of months, so I just want to thank Tim and Glenn for taking that issue. So I'll hand it off to you.
I say I'll go ahead and take this one. So we met on February 7th. A lot, like Tim said, in the previous Finance and Legislation meeting, a lot of the items discussed in the Building and Grounds committee meeting was also represented tonight in our discussions here. So look at the tax impacts potentially with the referendum and the long-term planning that we're looking at. Also discussed the survey and looking into what we're kind of next steps leading from March all the way to kind of November. And they have that timeline up on our screen over here. And then lastly, we also discussed about contracting with two different companies to do a community survey. We did have Conrad, Jess, I believe Kim, and Brandon that actually interviewed the two companies. Do either one of you want to add, or any of you want to add any of your thoughts around the two companies that you would have interviewed?
Just give you some feedback on both quality components. One that we're recommending moving forward with is just extensive experience doing these surveys and I think by us, the most healthy, practical questions.
Thank you. So as I said, from that, then we'll go into a discussion and action on entry into contract with school perceptions to conduct the survey regarding the direction of the long-term facilities.
I'd love to say I'm familiar with the reputation of school perceptions as the recommended provider and I totally support the administration's recommendation. Be happy to make the motion, the point of school perceptions as a survey. So I just have a quick question to throw in. Just wondered how, a little bit, kind of a derailed, a little bit out of touch with some of this. How exactly, like how is this going to be marketed in the survey? Is it going to be like, tonight we heard about the, you know, the difference, the different tiers that we had talked about, all of them are above $20,000. Not to mention $50 million for occurring expenses. Like how is, what's the thought process on how this is going to be approached in that survey? Especially considering like the last time they were surveyed, you know, it was $30 million, it was $60 million, and then $30 million benefit. Basically where we've been for the last five years. Are we going to talk about basically those three options? That's a pretty big dump, but I think you have any thoughts on how that's going to be, you know, basically asked? That's all, that's all the work to be done here in the next month and a half or so. We're actually meeting with, we had a tentative meeting on the books for a while. It started on that. Obviously, we haven't jumped into any of the.
It's all to be determined, Chris. The community sessions on February 20th between 9th will inform a lot and that information that we'll bring back to the board and through the committees and board meetings and working with architects and construction company and school perceptions. It's a big, pretty elaborate process to say, what do we go and ask or what are we basing? It's a big, pretty elaborate process to say, what do we go out and ask or what are we based on all that we've learned that we've got up to that point? Okay, the board has to be comfortable with what the survey looks like and what it's asked. Okay. And one of the, one of the topics I mentioned was that I mentioned in FNL update, but actually the public user to build out that survey to get that forwarded, but.
Excellent.
Let's do a, a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor of approving school perceptions uh for our survey partner? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, our next meeting is March seventh at six forty-five.
Thank you so much. Personnel, Chairperson Hevers.
Uh, in the next meeting, on February first, uh Superintendent Prior presented a revised uh teacher contract. And so maybe I'll let him plan what we're up to.
Sure, uh before you, is a new template that we'd like to use for our teacher employee contracts moving forward. It's a much uh scaled down, much more uh simple contract, the three or four page one that had been used here is way more than is necessary. Uh, the legal requirements, what a contract has to have in it for a cheaper contract is pretty minimal. And so this one covers the requirements that need to be in there based on state law. Very much resemble the contract I've used last twenty years in my previous districts. Um, just an efficiency thing. We couldn't use the old contract anyway because the handbook references that are in that are not going to be, that handbook's going to go away. So that would have created a weird, that's sort of, you know, almost locks us in, you can't change the handbook because you signed the contract that says all this handbook language is there. So this gets us out in front of that as well and uh really not a, it's not a substantive change. It doesn't change anything as far as teachers' contract obligations, force commitments, all that stuff is identical. It's all for state's edge. So really, uh, just a matter of we have to do things differently because we're changing things. And so, uh, it's a X name?
It is.
If we're appropriate to call a question.
Um, so uh I'm looking for a motion to approve uh revised individual teacher contract template.
I'll make the motion.
I'll say it. Any further discussion?
Um, and as I understand it, um, Mr. Prior, you've interacted with uh teaching staff, you're representatives. There's no surprise that it's coming their way, their their, we fully understand it, it's changed. Yes, sir. Thank you. Actually, did it change based on the.
Excellent. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
On the balance of the personnel committee meeting dedicated to a review of the uh the compiled output from our series of boardsmanship uh seminars that we had last spring. And uh, Brandon Miller was nice enough to uh take on that task after several board members had sort of attempted it over the last many months. I think during the end of that process, the first product uh was was excellent. Uh, I had a minor change that I had recommended, and we had some comments. And we agreed there, um, we'd hold this open for further board comments. Anybody who's willing to uh take a look at the uh sort of lack of commitments. And then Brandon's going to incorporate those and bring them back to the next personnel meeting. Uh, and if people are comfortable, we'll pass it. And if not, we'll continue to have discussion. Uh, as I said, we have no personnel meeting scheduled imminently, but uh it's going to be the time of year where I expect we'll be seeing one probably. All on toward the list of teacher contracts, rules, or that if it just comes to the board about it, it's just a discussion of words.
Okay, thank you so much, Chairperson Hevers. Last up is Chairperson Harris of Congress.
Thank you, Madam President. So our meeting was on February sixth, um seven of the nine of us were there. I think you all prepared, um, it was the beginning of our discussion with EOLA, uh, we're going over policies. A little bit of a technical snap through that day um with board docs, um although we did get in, did get to make it to ninety-one thirty, uh which is a power request, suggestions, complaints, uh policy. So we we got, uh, we got into the meat of that. There's just a few final, uh, final things we need to revise on that. But we're very close to that one being ready to bring forth to the board. We'll probably bring that forth on March sixth at our, or not at March sixth, uh at our next board meeting here in March. Um, we're going to continue on in the sections, as noted, zeros to the thousands, um, for our next policy, which is March sixth.
Thank you very much. Moving into other reports. Last thing. Uh, both Lynn and I did attend. Um, I'm going to defer in time on that um to the future. I didn't really prepare formally tonight, other than to say they have a robust attendance uh down at Milwaukee Center. They had a lot of great offerings. I don't know if we'd like to add.
Okay, so the only thing I would add is, um, we attended some sessions on referendums and who you support, which was interesting to hear their insights. And then there's other sessions that we kind of broke out and took different ones to be able to bring different perspectives back to the board as well.
The only other comment I could make is that um it was an interesting, interesting experience in our being part of the uh Policy and Resolutions Committee and the delegate staff or General, General Assembly, Assembly that just helped kind of midweek. Um, a fascinating process just to be a part of. And for those of you that would entertain, uh, coming down to the lobby, which is next year. Um, it's an interesting thing to to kind of be part of. Mr. Baniger with CSO, any comments?
Okay.
Uh, new business? Future agenda items? Any suggestions from the board? Okay, hearing none. Um, pursuant to state statute, nineteen point eight five one C, I'm kind of, so for the movement to close session. Like a motion to move into closed?
So.
I'd like to do a roll call vote to move into closed. You have mine started, Ms. Rex?
Aye.
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 Thank you all.